I heard that story today.
Quite really fast. Thirty more seconds.
Everybody's ready?
Yeah, okay. You're ready? And welcome. Please join me for the invocation to be given by Councilmember.
Ms. Bray. Father, we think this night opportunity to be here to serve, to participate in the town's business, Father, we ask that you give us guidance, wisdom as we make decisions. Some will be easy and some may not be, but Father, we just ask that you encompass us as a committee, as a council, as a town to work through those issues. Father, we thank you for this town that we live in, for the benefits that you've given to us, Father. We thank you for your love, your mercy, and your grace. Father, we thank you for your son, Jesus. Father, we just pray for this night that we honor and adore to you. We sing to pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me standing for the invocation of the religions. I pray that you lead us to the fire of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please receive it. Do you hear anyone on time? Our time is seven oh one. Let me officially call forward on the regular town council meeting of the town of Sunnyvale for Monday, June twenty-fourth. This is the second meeting for this morning. For the record, our council members accept Mayor Fratim Finch our question. So we have a call. Members of the audience, let me remind you one thing. If you are here to talk to the council on any time during the public forum or public hearing, would you be kind enough to fill up? There is a sign machine outside the door. If you could fill in your name and address, this is for staff to keep up with whose part of the council that you present. If you could do that, I would really appreciate it. With that, let me move on to the public forum at this time. If anyone would like to come forward and address the council, please come forward at this time. Now it is coming forward. So I am going to close the public forum. Council, moving on to consent agenda items. Council, we have two items on the consent agenda. Item number one, that is the Department Marquee Report, May twenty-nineteen. And number two, consider approval of minutes for the regular meeting of the town council for June tenth, twenty-nineteen. Would anyone like to remove any of the items from the consent agenda? If not, can I have a motion to approve consent added item one and two as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Clark.
Your second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Freeman to approve consent agenda items one, two, and one and two as presented. Have you heard the motion? Any discussions? All in favor, say five. Mr. Clark? Is it a decision, sir? Okay, motion passed. Six zero. Mayor Fratim Finch is out. Moving on to the public hearing portion of the agenda. Item number three, that is to hold a public hearing, discuss and consider an act of twenty-eighteen consumer confidence report water quality. Do you hear me?
Mayor and council, every year the public water systems have to submit a water quality report to their citizens, and this year we submitted ours. I think it went out like a week and a half ago, and it's posted on our website. And we're required to do a public forum if there's any questions about it or any concerns. It's pretty simple.
So then any special report or does that mean?
No, sir. The only thing still pending on there is we had a violation back in twenty-sixteen for a reporting requirement where actually we did everything we were supposed to do, but they had a new rule that you were supposed to take it back to the place you sampled from and show the citizen the report in person. And we didn't fulfill that requirement, so they cited us for not certifying that requirement. But we did everything else.
Counsel, any questions for us now? Okay, this is, thank you. Again, this is the public hearing portion of the agenda. If anyone would like to come forward and talk about this topic, please come forward. Now it is coming forward. So I am going to close the public hearing at this time on this topic. Counsel, are there additional discussions? If not, can I have a motion to doubt? Is that the right word, Susan? Doubt? Accept the twenty-eighteen consumer confidence report water quality.
Motion to accept any water quality report.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman to accept the report water quality. Second by Mr. Allen to accept water quality report for twenty-eighteen. Have you heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? All in favor, say five. All opposed? Motion passed six zero. Mr. Finch is not opposed. Moving on to the development services portion of the agenda. Item number four, that is to discuss, consider, and act upon the second reading of ordinance nineteen dash fifty. An ordinance of the town council of the town of Sunnyvale, amended, updated, A, P Stude, specifically R T P three point zero, 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 building related fees. Section three point one, zero, zero of the building permit P Stude are shown in Exhibit A with nineteen ordinance nineteen dash fifteen, providing for feeling cross, providing for a separability cross, and providing for an effective.
Mayor, council, as noted, this is the second reading of this ordinance. House Bill eight fifty-two is the reasoning for this amendment. That House Bill requires that, or prohibits towns from using valuations to issue permits or value, or issue the cost of permits. We now have to use square footage. Our building official has come up with a calculation of fifty cents per square foot based on past square footages and how that valuation translated amongst the two into an average cost. So he feels so this is a good price and a good amendment as we move forward.
Counsel, questions for us now? Rashad, I do have a question. Is this a number that we're going to be looking at every year? Or is this something that this is going to be kind of like the number that we'll hold on?
This is going to be the number going forward. It is free to be amended in the future if we so choose to. I will say, though, it has to be somewhat justified. You know, if increased costs come up, then so be it. I think building official can speak to that as well. We kind of talked about it. This puts us in line with most metroplexes, others municipalities, excuse me. So I don't think this will be an issue moving forward no time soon, but we can definitely look at it again.
Mayor, question? Rashad, I think the last time we talked about this on read number one, there was still a decent discussion or maybe some feedback to what the other towns were doing. Is this the same price that the other towns in our similar communities are using?
They will have to use, yes. Everyone's going to square footages. I'll let the kind of chime in. He spoke to some of his colleagues as he was doing research on this.
Yes, sir, Councilman Allen. A lot of the other municipalities that were utilizing the valuation are going to the square footage cost like we are. Every variable comes into play differently. Some municipalities are charging a larger square footage based on the product, but they're using the higher square footage because they're inputting other fees inside of that square footage fee. An example, for ours, what we'll be doing is we'll be charging the square footage of the house, but then we also charge a fee for the trades, like the mechanical, the plumbing, and the electrical, whereas other municipalities tie it all into one fee. But with ours going at fifty cents at this juncture right now, we are about twenty-five to forty percent higher than what we were charging based off the valuation.
So how's that fifty cents per square foot aligned with the other towns in our communities?
Well, most of the, like, some of the other towns that I... Yes, sir.
The other towns in North Texas.
In North, yes, sir. Yeah, what I looked at is I tried to compare to the comparable municipalities that we are, and some of those are, like I said, one of them's at sixty-five cents a square foot. But what they're doing is they're importing the other fees into that square footage, and so they're just making it one flat fee. Whereas when we do ours at fifty cents, and then we also charge for the MEPs, we are in line with what they're charging. We just aren't encompassing into one fee. We have the separate fees.
Now, why do you have that? Are there additional questions from Mr. Freeman? So I'm going to offer up the public hearing. If anyone from the audience would like to come forward and address this topic, please come forward. Now it is coming forward. So I am going to close the public hearing. Counsel, are there additional discussions on item number four? If not, can I have a motion with respect to item number four? Okay, are there additional discussions? Sorry, I called for a motion, right? Can I have a motion with respect to item number four? Two. Passed, right? Approved, yeah, okay. Motion made by Mr. Clark to approve agenda item number four as presented. Second by Mr. Freeman. Have you heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? All in favor, signify. All opposed? Motion passed six zero. Moving on to economic development portion of the agenda. Item number five, discuss, consider, and act upon the Economic Development Incentive Guidelines and Application. Ms. Anderson?
Good evening, mayor and council. This past month, the economic development boards have passed a incentive guideline and application process for potential clients that are wanting to come into Sunnyvale and asking for incentives. So I know it's not in the packet, but it was sent out separately. If you do not have a copy or have not seen that, I have extra copies for you as well. So open to any questions or thoughts, comments?
Counsel, question? Counsel, question for Ms. Anderson? Tracy had a couple of minor questions, nothing significant, but... Never mind. It's nothing significant, so it's just more of a clarification for me. Mr. Clark?
So this was what was approved by four A and four B?
Yes, sir.
This is a guideline, right? That's the way you accepted this one?
Correct, yes, sir.
I thought a lot of good work was put into it. Looks very comprehensive, eleven pages. There's some flexibility for the four A and four B and the council to act upon, so good job.
Thank you.
Counsel, are there additional questions for Anderson? Thanks, Ms. Anderson.
I would just like, if there are no other questions, to be able to just adopt it, if council feels comfortable with being able to adopt it.
Okay. Got it. Counsel, what's your pressure? Correct. Yes. Okay. Ms. Freeman?
I mean, we've taken a look at this for a couple of weeks at this point. You know, we didn't have too many questions if they'd gone back and put it up.
Okay, so you want to make your motion then?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the guideline.
As? Item number five, right? Okay. Motion made by Mr. Freeman to adopt Economic Development Incentive Guidelines and Application as presented, seconded by Mr. Clark. Have you heard the motion? All in favor, signify. All opposed? Motion passed six zero. I really appreciate you. I need to put a lot of work into it. Time to switch between different pages here. Okay. One second, yes. Okay, moving on to finance portion of the agenda, that is item number six, presentation of twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty proposed budget. Ms. Hopkins?
Good evening, mayor and council. I put on your dais a PowerPoint presentation. I updated it and made a couple of corrections on it. So the second page is the budget schedule, and tonight we're going to be looking at the utility fund, special revenue, home state amenities, and the PEG account. Page three gives you a comparison of our water rates as compared to other communities. We're right about in the middle. On page four, I gave you the assumptions that I used for setting the water and sewer revenue, and those are based on the rate study that was done. So I have the revenue going up seven point eight percent. The other revenues are based on a five-year average and historical trends. And then the water purchases, we did get a re-rate from North Texas Water Municipal District, and I used that rate for our water purchases. We're still waiting for re-rates from Mesquite and Garland on our sewer. Any questions on the utility fund?
Do you have an idea, when do we expect to hear from?
I have a schedule, mayor, but I don't have it committed to memory. But I can get back with you on that.
Do they have it in the next month or two?
I would suspect.
Well, Liz, that's a water purchases in North Texas. It's an increase of, right, twenty-five percent, twenty-four point nine. Why did we have a rate state that... I mean, we're raising water rates by seven percent, and it's costing us twenty-five percent more. Did we miss a water rate stay about somehow? Or is this something unique anomaly that North Texas has done that's...
Well, again, I would have to go back and do a comparison, but this is a preliminary rate from North Texas. So the other thing that's going to play into that is whether they raise the number of gallons that we have to purchase. So again, this is very preliminary. They just gave us this number for budgetary purposes. They really didn't give us an explanation as to where they came up with that number. But we'll keep watching it.
I'll answer your question, Mr. Wade.
Yeah, but the good words means we've increased rates by seven percent. So we've got a change of twenty-five percent rate on water and possibly fifty percent rate on sewer. And we're starting out hope before we ever get to a stop. As the time places.
Right, and please know that we'll be watching this very closely. Those numbers...
Icon?
They're not...
Listen, Bob, okay.
We apologize. The carpet was replaced here, so we think some, in that process, something was happening. So I'm trying to speak loud enough to pick up on that mic. But, so these are preliminary. We're well ahead of schedule with presenting the budget, and we're going through it very slowly, little pieces at a time, so that as pieces of information come in, we can go back and update you, and we will do that in each meeting. We'll revisit anything that has changed. But we had to make some assumptions and plug in very safe numbers to make sure we could balance, and then as we get more definitive numbers, we'll go back and plug those in.
So Susan, are we saying that the actual rate that it's going up? So it looks like those are very, like, concrete numbers, that we have the down and the penny. Are we saying that that's the rate that's actually going up, is the three seventy-one?
That is a preliminary rate that was provided to us. They're like us, they're setting their budgets as well.
And we also, you know, at any time, we can, once we adopt the budget, if we're finding that we're not getting revenues, we can come back and revisit this. But we are adopting what this rate study suggested, but if we're not, if it's not covering the expenses, we can readjust that.
In North Texas, municipal water district did change how they calculate their fees since we did the rate studies, and we'll have to...
Maybe so.
They did a whole new calculation on how they...
They're going to disagree, Mary, but looking at the next phase, you see we're still operating in a deficit position, and it's even with its interest, so it's likely to come down.
Yes, sir.
So Ms. Hopkins, you mentioned something about we haven't heard from NT MWD whether they are going to increase the quantity of the water. With the rain, do you anticipate that minimum purchase volume going up? And it's kind of hard to predict, but is, are there any indication, are we anywhere close to it in the last several months?
Well, what I can do is go back and look at that preliminary letter and see if they provided any indication, because that calculation that they use is as long as that dais. So there's a lot of different things that go into it. In effect, it runs across municipalities. You know, there's lots of members of the North Texas Water Municipal District. So the way that those rates are set, I can go back and provide you with that, the information that they provided me. It's about two pages.
It is true that our take and pay is based upon historical largest consumption, which was about two thousand and one, whatever reason. So now with the vast number of increased houses and the increased commercial areas, particularly managed, we could be busting that take and pay maximum usage. We can find ourselves at a higher level real quick before we end this contract in twenty-twenty-seven.
And that is my understanding, and the other thing that works against you are the years when not only do they base it on that highest level, but if they start to put water restrictions in place, and they're like, we want you to reduce your consumption, but we still want you to pay based on the highest usage. Now, I don't think we're going to run into that this year, not right now anyway with all the rain we've had. But this has been a battle as long as I've been here. So, but again, I will be glad to provide you that information, and we can go from there.
Maybe some sort of chart showing, watch the take and pay, right? And then the historic consumption. You're going to see we are paying a lot of money to North Texas, not using any of them, but we are forced to pay the money.
And if the numbers aren't working out, would you suggest a revisit?
Okay.
Mayor, I think that, I think what Susan references to keep an eye on and adjust them, it's proved it based on conversations we had in our workshop, in that we didn't want to operate from a deficit to a deficit.
Yeah.
We need to be in alignment to collecting what the cost is and not just giving them free money, free water. So I think that if we have to adjust them, we just need to stay a confident, I think it's come in when we made the workshop, to charge what it's costing us. I think that's probably what councilway is concerned with, because we need to get in line with charging what it's costing us.
Yeah. Absolutely.
But doing that chart, we go to, is that one of those charts where we're trying to not chart things back to the citizens' user chart? not charge things back to the citizens, the user charge? Try to get that in line.
So there's a take or pay.
Right, the take or pay, right.
We got to pay that much money to North Texas Water Municipal District, right? How much more we take, we spend, we consume less. We can only charge our citizens based on the consumption.
Right.
If there's a delta pay, it still has to be paid from the town.
So how would we make that up on fees? It seems like that's just kind of the areas we're kind of stuck in.
Well, I think that's what the workshop was, is that we took a look at the store data, what we're using, what consumption is, and we came up with a price that would get us to a point that we were paying, that we were charging what we used, what we were using. Water and sewer is a weird topic. You missed a lot in that workshop, we knew the council, but if they, if they increased the amount of the charge since we had the workshop, we're already operating in a deficit. So the commitment, I think, from Susan and from Liz, is that we'll, what I heard was that we'll watch it, and we have to monitor, and we'll update the budget and the fees associated, so that the council operate in a deficit.
But we still have a couple of months till we adopt the budget, so, you know, that's why we do this and slip such small rates, so that we can keep going back and tweaking as we get things locked in.
And again, that water rate study took average increases. So one year, in this case, you have this, this larger than average increase. But I think more of it, more of the increase is captured in those minimums. But I'll have to prove that to you with, with some data. So, but you're, if you look on page five, you'll see that once you back the depreciation out.
Is page okay?
It's page five. It's this page that's on the screen.
Got it.
If you look over to the far right, you'll see that once you add the depreciation back in, you're actually in a positive cash flow position. And that's what we were looking for in order to fund through our water and rate, and wastewater rates, the Harris sewer line renovation or rehabilitation. So I feel pretty good about that, because that debt's going to be about $465,000 a year.
Any questions, Ms. Hopkins?
Not on the utility fund.
Okay. Any questions for, on this item? Okay, keep moving.
Special revenue is the next fund up. The assumptions on the special revenue account, this, this account pretty much manages itself because it is restricted by state law as to what you can use the funds. When we, when citation holders pay their tickets, a portion of that goes into two restricted funds, court technology and court security. And it's very limited in what you can use those funds for. Donations also go into this fund, and this is an internal transparency, best practice, we think, so that things such as Sunny Fest donations, bike patrol donations, animal control donations, those kinds of things can be segregated and tracked through special revenue. We do not budget for donations, because we don't know ahead of time whether or not we'll get them. So we use it more as a management process for donations. And again, the expenses are very restricted. But you're going to have a fund balance of about $211,000. 145 of that is court security, which is extremely restricted. And about $12,006 is court technology. This helps pay for our ticket writers, it helps pays to have our court jacket scanned so we don't keep paper copies. It helps, we had one other, our micro, our microfiche platform helps pay for that. So the money that comes into that court, court's technology, we do, we do get use of that.
Court security, can we pay part of the police services, police officers serving here? Is that?
That's the same location, I believe, of the court.
It has to be in the same location as the court. You can pay for a bailiff. That, that's about the only personnel that I'm aware of that you can pay for out of that. Metal detectors, things like that.
Metal detectors?
Things like the, if we wanted to redo the front, you could pay for that out of it, because the court's located in this building, but not for a separate location.
And you can use it, I believe you can, and I have a PowerPoint that I'd be glad to share with y'all on what all of this is. I believe you can use it for evidence storage. And if you do have a police department and you ask the people leave their weapons locked up while they were inside the building, you can use it for that. Again, it's, it's kind of restricted for us, because we don't have our own police force. So that, that's going to change, obviously. And moving on to homestead amenities. This is one that I corrected the N code reports, but these slides, this slide here is correct, and the next slide is correct. The homestead amenities is restricted by ordinance to provide contributions in lieu of amenities. And right now, there's phase seven is remaining with 35 lots. And I think Rashad indicated there's no plans underway for those lots right now. So we didn't budget any revenues. And the expenditures right now is the contribution to fund that portion of the phase one, Collins Road Phase One intersection. And you'll see that on the next slide. And the ending fund balance is budgeted to be about $279,000. And on this slide, you can see that contribution to finish out the Collins Road project, which would mean that we don't have to borrow any more money for that project, which is good news. And again, the only revenue coming into the fund that's budgeted is interest. And the PEG fund is the last fund. We've talked about this fund before. This was cable franchise fees that were collected by the cable companies so that you could provide televised council meetings. I reached out to the Sunny Bell ISD, they do not have, they don't televise their, their meetings. We thought maybe we could partner with them. Everybody is going to streaming. So, but I, they led me, or they gave me some contacts, so I'm going to pursue those, see if there's any way that we can, that we can use this money. But streaming is, is the future, and I think it's going to be really hard. The cable companies are the ones that collected this money, and it's their infrastructure that should be used. And that infrastructure is television.
Are they still collecting, or can we find a way to stop them from collecting?
No, we stopped them from collecting, I believe in, yes, I believe in 2017, because this is passed on to your residents.
When we collect in the past, you're sitting there, can you use it?
Correct. Everything we've ever collected under this franchise fee is in that $69,543 number.
I'm glad we are not collecting anymore.
Yes, that was a council decision by resolution. And then the details, the N code reports, for those that, that like those. And I did correct them, and I indicated that I corrected them. So if you have any questions, please email Susan, and we'll get back with you on anything that's in there. Unless you have any questions, that's all I have.
So Liz, your, your plan is to come back the next several council meetings, kind of go next step, step by step, and finish up the budget, correct?
Yes, again, on page two, that is our budget schedule. And of course, we will, as we move forward and we get these re-rates, I will bring that forward to you. If, you know, if I know something on July 8th that would affect the previous reviewed, say, the utility fund, I'll bring that back to you. We'll keep you as current as we can as we move through this process.
You always do.
And additionally, just so you know, it's in your packet, we did provide the budget letter, and the budget letter covers all the funds. So please go ahead and start sending over any questions that you have, because it has all the funds in it. And that will be filed with the secretary.
Council, any questions for Ms. Hopkins? Leave it alone. Wait for the next set of numbers in the next council. Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. Okay, moving on to item number, town management portion of the agenda, item number seven, that is discuss, consider, and act upon a recommendation of the Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, Citizens Committee for Future Capital Projects and Associated Funding Sources.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't know that I've ever seen you from this angle before. Thanks for letting me present tonight. What, the CIP plan or the proposed plan that we're going to be going over is truly a group effort between staff. Eric Mahaw with Hilltop attended numerous meetings and gave us a lot of information, as well as the CIP Citizens Committee, and a couple of members are here tonight as well. As part of the 2018-2019 budget retreat, the council directed staff to develop a more robust CIP plan that would outline capital projects over the next five years, and that's in accordance with our Home Rule Charter. So that's what we have before you tonight, and we're excited to show you what the committee and staff have been working on. The CIP, or Capital Improvement Plan, is intended to be a five-year planning document, reviewed and adopted annually by the town council to plan for capital improvements related to towns, streets, drainage, water, wastewater, parks, recreation amenities, and facilities. So any asset that is over $25,000 in value. This is intended to be a living document that we would review annually as part of your budget process. So it's not intended to be, you adopt it and we're done with it, and we just carry it out. We're going to look at it every year and go through it, and make sure those priorities have stayed the same. So in starting the process, the leadership team developed a list of proposed projects and updated that list even over the course of the last several months. We included items that are identified in the comprehensive plan, water and wastewater master plan, other previously identified capital projects, and the impact fee studies. So anything we could think of, we added to this list. And then as things came up throughout the committee meetings, they were also added to the list. You'll see, we still have two projects on there that are listed as unknown for their costs, because we have not yet developed cost estimates for those projects. And then item F4, which is public safety facility renovations and capital costs related to law enforcement and other public safety needs. The committee did not delve into that project, because the police study committee was working concurrently. So when we get to talking about recommendations, know that the, the CIP committee didn't really have a chance to review those projects, just because of the concurrent work between the two committees. The council appointed the citizen committee of 12 members on February 25th with the scope that's shown before you. These 12 citizens gave a considerable amount of time and energy learning about town operations and these proposed projects. They went on a tour, they attended several meetings that went over some very thrilling information about sewer systems, water systems, parks and rec facilities. And the tour was great. I think we, we showed a lot of locations for those that are above ground and talked about the things that are below ground as well. So they did a great job, and they met almost bi-weekly over the course of several months, and we threw a lot of information their way during those meetings. The council also approved the methodology to review and prioritize the projects that the staff and citizens both used when ranking their projects. This picture here is from one of their committee meetings, looking at and ranking their projects and the, the amount of funding that they recommended. So after all of those meetings and all of that information, the committee and staff recommend the project shown in blue on the left, which total about $28.7 million. And as staff was going through this, we really looked at what we felt was the responsibility of the town to provide to the citizens, and I think the committee followed that same charge. So we feel very confident that these projects are those that need to be done. In looking at these projects, we included funding possibilities from a variety of different funding sources. As Liz mentioned earlier, Harris sewer project has already been identified as a project that could be funded by existing water and wastewater rates. We also looked at certificates of obligation, general obligation bonds, tax notes, impact fee funds, economic development funds, and grant and partnership funding, and recommending those projects and how we move forward. So putting all of that together, staff is recommending the following timing to fund the recommended projects. We'd like to issue tax notes this fall to pay for law enforcement and other public safety needs. That would include the renovation of the existing facility, capital projects needed, or capital items needed to start a police retirement, things that could be like cars, body proof, or body armor, body cameras, dashboard cameras, all the things that go along with that, that you saw in the police study, as well as facility needs that may be related. Like to look at issuing COs or certificates of obligation in December of 2019. Those items are noted in blue, I believe, on this slide, so no. That would be drainage and Collins Road engineering for phase two. So those are the green projects on this slide. And then possible issues of, or a general obligation election in May of 2020. That would be for a new fire station and animal control facility is the recommendation. One of the things the committee did in looking at recommending projects was leaving capacity for future road improvements. And the committee looked at several different options for roadway improvements and really felt that leaving an additional $8.5 million for future roadway projects would be prudent, given that we don't know yet what if any partnership may be available for Collins Road Phase Two. So Dallas County is in the process, they're doing their call for projects. That deadline, I believe, is in September. So we feel like moving forward, we will have a good indication of what partner funds will be available for that project or other roadway projects, should the priorities change.
So that is, if and when we find a partner for a major road improvement, this will be, money will be allocated from this 8.5 as a town contribution.
Right, so.
You're intending it?
So the, the 8.5 is not necessarily an identified funding source right now.
It's a bucket of money, right?
Well, it's, we feel like there is capacity, debt capacity for that in the future.
Future.
Yes, sir. So what's shown right there is that a possible issuance of a CO would be done in the 2021 fiscal year. We took it in two steps. The committee came in and said, we feel like the comfort level of issuing different amounts of debt came in at around $19 million, okay, for tax impact to the homeowner. But they didn't prioritize $19 million worth of projects. They left a little bit of capacity in there to be determined at a later date, because they realized this is a living document and not meant to be set in stone once you adopt it. Does that answer your question, Mayor?
Makes sense. I'm not, the 8.5.
Yes. And 8.5 is the estimate for Collins Road Phase Two minus engineering.
And you can see that engineering for phase two is up in the CO category.
Right, so we would move forward with engineering pretty quickly, and then hopefully we would have a partner identified for phase two.
Yeah, and that would make that project shovel-ready, which makes us much more competitive in securing grant funding.
These are the utility fund projects that we talked about. We currently have in the 1819 budget, $200,000 for rehabilitation of the Long Creek Sewer Line. We'd like to go ahead and move forward with spending that, I believe, for the engineering design on Harris phases, phase, it's the, I can't remember east or west phase, phase two, but, and then we would look at issuing the debt for the actual projects. But again, those have already been identified projects in your water and wastewater rates, and would need no change to the funding structure to go ahead and move forward with those projects. Any questions on the utility fund side of things? You'll also notice on there, the $6.1 million is identified in the 2023-2024 fiscal year. Those are the 2014 bonds that were voter-approved for the transition to Dallas Water Utilities that are also already funded through water and wastewater rates.
That is in preparation for, we're getting out of the contract with the North Texas Water Municipal.
Correct. Correct. So we haven't issued, we don't have the money yet, but yes, we need to issue it within 10 years of voter approval, or you have to go back and get the AG to do further approval. So we need to issue it at the, in the 2023-2024 fiscal year. It was 2014-approved. These next two slides are slides that you all saw at your budget retreat. They just, again, go over the timing and possible changes to the INS rate. As you're all aware, with the legislature's changes to how we calculate our MNO rate, we expect that rate will be compressed, and that the INS rate will be expanded based on this CIP recommendation. So we went into this funding structure with several goals. One is to keep our tax rate as level as possible, the overall tax rate, so MNO and INS rates combined, to keep them as level as possible. Eric Maha with Hilltop has done a lot of work with us to structure that debt in such a way that it does not have a significant fluctuation in our tax rates to our citizens. But as we go through each piece of the CIP plan, so as we approve projects and you approve funding sources, we'll be looking at that piece by piece, so that you can see what each one does or does not do to the overall tax rate, the budget, and things as we go through that. So I didn't want to get too far down into that right now, because as we start issuing that debt, those numbers will change based on interest rates, market, those kinds of things. So if you have any questions, Eric is here to answer them, but otherwise, I'll move forward. I think that was...
Do you have a question for the reference to bond rates? Would we lower down than we expected it to be?
Yes. If he's nodding, then yes.
We expect it to stay relatively low for the next six to eight months?
I think so.
Does that work? There we go. No, rates have been very favorable over the last two weeks especially, and they've only improved since the time we ran the CIP analysis, and we were fairly conservative in that analysis, and they've improved since then. I think the Fed, you know, this week, they held rates steady, and I think there's talk of possibly a couple cuts the rest of this year. You know, that's not going to impact the long-term rates, per se, but there is a ripple-down effect. So if we see a rate cut in the coming months, I think that will impact us, and our hope is rates will stay where they're at today, so. But we have enough cushion in there to allow for upward movement. And one of the other big variables I might go ahead and mention is the property tax base, and we won't have that figure until July 25th. And based on preliminary estimates, it looks like those values are trending upward, above on what's been used in the CIP analysis. So that, along with the interest rates, we feel like those projections shown on the screen are very conservative at this point, so.
Eric, I have a question for you. Just in general. I'm looking at this, we're layering debt here. Oh, sorry. Looks like we've got debt that's coming out in October, we've got debt that's coming out in December, and we've also got debt that's coming out in May. My concern is going back to taxpayers and raising taxes once, raising taxes twice, and raising taxes three times. Especially with that third one being one they actually have to vote on. From, I mean, does it make sense for us to try to, I mean, does it make more sense for us to ladder these out and do them piece by piece? Does it make sense to group them? Are there issues in doing them together? I mean, are there different kind of tax notes, you know, or notes, COs, GOs? I mean, is this, is this a, is this more of a strategy that we're using to make sure that things get done, or is this just kind of how business is done?
No, I think there is a good strategy. We looked at the full CIP plan, and in total, we came up with three types of debt obligations Texas cities can enter into. The tax notes being the first, you're limited to a seven-year repayment. Early on in the process, the CIP committee did not factor in the police into the CIP discussion. And once we layered the CIP, or the police into the CIP, and decided to fund those with seven-year tax notes, your point about having to structure the future issuances became very important. So you'll notice in the analysis, the tax notes for the police are subject to that seven-year repayment, and then we have the certificates of obligation for the drainage, Collins Road, and then future GOs, more or less wrapping around those tax notes. So there's a phasing effect in that we know the police project needs to be completed, and so that project is on go first. And we, I think staff and us, we were not comfortable going longer than seven years on the police, because a lot of that's equipment-related, and then you'd get in a situation where you're financing longer than useful life. So it was decided early on to use the tax notes for the police, and so we knew then that we'd have to structure the other projects around that seven-year repayment. And part of the discussion, I know, came about, do we hold a bond election in November? And I think, to your point, if the decision was to hold a bond election in November, you're pushing that GO issuance further up into the timeline, and so you're amplifying the tax rate in those years. So as it stands, the police would hit the tax roll this fiscal year in the tax rate. The COs for drainage and Collins would hit next year, and then the GO would hit the following year, and then if there's future road improvements, that'd be the following year. So there's kind of a four-year staging effect that we've layered in.
The other thing, just as a reminder, because they passed the mic, sorry. Just as a reminder, you know, with what the legislature passed with the cap, that we can't grow revenues more than 3.5%, what that's going to do is our values are going to continue to rise. So think about the things that will come on next year. QT, the renovations and the expansion of lineage, and so, and that alone, wasn't that a $40 million expansion? Well, 3.5%, I think when we did the math preliminarily, was only $25 million. So anything over that is just driving our tax rate down, which is good, and but what it does is it creates an opportunity to take care of some of these projects that have, you know, been hanging out there that need to be done. The drainage, we've got people's homes being flooded, you know, these are really important projects, but because our rate will be driven down, then we're using, we're timing the issuance of debt to correlate to those drops, so that our residents don't feel such a big impact to us being able to do these projects. So it is really, you know, it's, it is partially our ability to do these, and it's done in priority, but it also is very strategic to try to keep the tax, the overall tax rate as flat as possible for our citizens.
Right. I mean, when rates go down, from my understanding, it doesn't mean that taxes go down, it just means that basically, there's a percent, oh, sorry, there's a percentage that goes down, but the taxes are going to stay the same, if not go up, that 3.5%.
Well, it depends upon if your value of your property goes up or not. You know, it's always a calculation of rate times value, and so if your particular home, you know, increases in value, then yeah, your taxes could go up, but I think, isn't there a 5% cap on that, too? Mr. Wade, I'm looking at you.
10% on valuation.
10% on valuation. So, you know, that, that, if your values go up, yes, your individual taxes will go up, but most of ours is really more about new values coming on, and every legislator will say, well, new values don't count. You're right, they don't count year one, but year two, they roll on. And so, you know, that's why I'm referencing QT, and I'm referencing lineage, because next year, they will come on.
I guess my biggest concern with the way that it's structured now is that we're going to have a tax increase, and then a tax increase, and then a tax increase, and then a tax increase.
And a tax decrease, and a tax decrease, and a tax decrease concurrently.
Tax rate decrease.
No.
You've got two pieces in your tax rate, you've got the MNO, and you've got INS. MNO's going to be forced down because of the 3.5% cap. Our debt is going to go up, our INS is going to go up, but our goal is to strive to keep the tax rate the same, but the makeup is going to be slightly different, which is the same thing the school's going to be doing. They're going to go through with that tax election, and they're going to pump up their INS, and they're going to lower their MNO because of legislation. So I don't think it is. The other thing to your question, in my mind, is the fact that we're going to pass these, presumably, we're going to pass these debt obligations, but they're not going to come on stream for PNI until the following tax year. So we're always going to be knowing what's going to come forward to us in advance.
This chart really illustrates the point. Okay. If you look at MNO and INS put them together, it's just how is our tax rate comprised?
Yeah, so that may be an actual chart, and that shows in the next fiscal year, the one we're currently planning for, the MNO is coming down, it's the green bar, and the blue line is going up to cover some additional obligations. And the only thing we're capped on is the 3.5% and the $500,000 limitation.
So in other words, the goal is to keep the overall tax rate flat as possible while moving the money between MNO and interest rates, right?
Yeah, it's going to be...
Citizens is fairly flat. At the same time, citizens get to enjoy the benefits of CIP.
It's going to be very hard for us to find a way to raise the tax rate now with the 3.5% cap, because our tax valuations are going up so high that the 3.5% cap is not tax rate, it's revenues, and we're going to generate these revenues because of increased valuations, and we're going to get the hammer in the second year when these big projects come on. Question, one more question for Eric. Eric, what is the impact, if any, that's going to cause our AA bond rating to go down? Is there a point where we have to be concerned about that, which will increase the tax, the interest rate?
That's always a good question, because the town does have a very good bond rating. You know, when the rating agencies look at the town, they look at willingness to pay, and we look at the current debt as well, and there's some natural decline in the town's current debt service, and so any new debt, we feel like layers in nicely. And given the value growth, yes, it's going to be a tax increase on INS, but in the rating agency's eyes, it's not going to be a substantial increase. You know, fund balance, economic activity also play heavily into that rating. Debt is a portion, but given the economics, the value growth, fund balance, we don't see pressure on the rating with this program, so.
Eric, a quick question.
Yes, sir.
So, are you got the ears on? Oh, yeah. Is this on?
No. They're not working.
So, just looking at the GO, I know we're going to try to balance it, so as we decrease our tax rates, we're going to try to make it so the taxpayers, there's no real change, but if we just look at the GO, what we're planning right now by itself in a vacuum, what is that rate? What's the increase that probably, maybe per year?
Okay. Right now, the GO, do you have the slide that? We have it at 5.75 million, that would be the fire, and then the animal. We're estimating around $490,000 a year in debt service. There, let me just say. For the GO, it's around a two-cent increase for the 5.75 million. And then we have a chart, the average home value within the town, and this is coming from DCAT, is around $361,000. So a two-cent increase, we calculate on the average homeowner around $72 a year and $6 a month, and that would be just on the GO portion.
The 3.5 is going to push the MNO side down by almost that, at least that two cent.
That's not an increase in the tax rate.
No, right, I understand, just the tax base is the same. Right.
But the makeup of the tax rate is going to increase.
Right, no, I understand, just in a vacuum, I just, I think it's important to understand that we're only talking also, which, which hopefully is going to be balanced, so there won't be any change, but in a vacuum, it's only, you can talk about $6 a month or something.
Yeah, everything remaining equal, but we understand with the MNO, and, you know, the biggest driver in all of this is property values year to year, so.
We've got to also realize the legislature attempted to limit the COs this year. And by the time we get to two years down the road, when the next legislative session comes about, we may find ourselves not able to issue COs this year, and everything's going to be GO or a tax note.
That's a very good point. There was legislation that would have put COs in that 3.5% cap, which would have done away with COs altogether, but that...
This is really important to your window for us, you know, that we have deferred maintenance that we need, and projects that we need to get done, and this is a critical window, and financially, we have this ability because of the 3.5 to get some things done and keep the tax rate. But what it also means is we need to do projects to keep our MNO low, because MNO is maintenance and operations. So that means our maintenance and operations is not going to be able to grow significantly. We're going to have to keep it very under control. You know, in the retreat, I mentioned several strategies that we're going to be looking at to do that.
I think just to capitalize on what Mr. Wade said, is that you can actually pay more taxes because of the appraisal of your house to go up.
Only if it does.
But that doesn't mean that you're paying more tax. For anything we've talked about today, it's strictly the appraisal of your house that will cause the money that you're paying in taxes to go up. But if it be capped at 3.5, even that, versus, is it 8?
Our total revenue is taxed.
All right, Mayor and Council. So before you, Lyle has put together a proposed schedule for these proposed projects, just for your review, and that's based on the timelines that we talked about tonight for the issuances of those debt, of that debt. So, other than that, that is the end of my presentation. You have about a 36-page CIP plan in your packet that goes through each of the proposed projects. We'll work on adding the other projects in our identified list as we move forward, but other than that, staff is happy to hear any comments or recommendations you may have.
So let's read the, go ahead, Kevin, I was going to summarize it. So here, there's a capital improvement plan developed between the Citizens Committee and the staff, presented to the council, right?
Correct.
There's a list of recommended projects. What is asked of the council is reviewed, and that's through the big picture plan.
Yes, sir.
The projects, priorities can change and will change, and the funding source and the timing can change and will change, and projects can be irred or delayed from here. Is that clear? May I understand?
Yes, and every one of these projects, including debt issuance and the project and the contract, every piece of that still comes back to the council. So you're just adopting, this is the CIP plan.
The big picture.
But every step of the way, everything from debt issuance to issuing a call, you know, awarding a bid to a contractor, every one of those things comes back to you for votes.
So you get several mics at the top again, right?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Crowe?
I was, I had the honor of being on the CIP committee, and I see some members of the CIP committee, I just want to say thank you for all the members that are here today, all the members that have participated in this CIP committee. It's very important to the town, and so thank you all for being involved. Thank you, Eric, for our members' participation.
Can I ask any other questions and discussions?
So, can we make some comments about some of these projects?
Love for you two, yeah, no?
Sorry?
No.
Okay, well, you can rest assured, if you knew it was coming, you put drainage on here, and you do the honor of putting dollar amounts on it, I'm going to say something. I'm going to say something. This is a time, thank you, there's five drainage projects on here. Do you know which one I'm most interested in? The only project that's causing damage to one of our residents. Very interesting to note on here, that that's the smallest project, it's only $100,000. Very interesting to note on here that that's the smallest project, it's only $100,000. Also interested to see that it's the longest designed project. It's 15 months. Nothing else even takes a year to design. We're already three months, maybe even four months into that design. It's a $65,000 project, and we're going to pay $25,000 to have it designed? I don't understand that. We're going to pay $25,000 to spend 15 months designing a $65,000 project? And it's the only project in town that's causing direct damage to a person's property? Now, I can break that down a lot further. $25,000 over 15 months? It's about $1,500 a month. That's what an engineer spends in one day. So we're getting about one day of business out of this project. I don't understand that, and I'd sure like to have some understanding of why, but that is the project. All of these others, including that $4 million project, takes less than a year to design.
Lyle, do you want to come up and talk about that?
Yeah, good evening, sir. Okay, I wanted to, you left your finish up there. As far as the cost of it, one reason why the cost of this project is a lesser amount than really all of the others is this is a modification of an existing facility rather than constructing something from scratch. So there's not as much physical work that has to happen in order to make that work. So that's why the cost is low. So I just wanted to try to clarify that right at the beginning. As far as the timing goes, the only thing I can say right now is, is the timing is flexible. The way that we've worked this out, and I've done it with consultation with staff, is we're trying to sort of work within, number one, the ranking that was identified by the CI committee, the amount of time that I personally think that this will take to actually get done, and also trying to look into everything else we've got, trying to look at how effectively we can manage these things in terms of the staffing level that we've got, and just the amount of just sheer time that it's going to take to get it done, to try to get all this stuff moving forward in a reasonable fashion, and that's why that looks the way it does. Again, if it's something that we need to look at in a little more detail, we can certainly do that. But that's kind of what it is at this point.
So is that something we'll redesign? I hear what Mr. Wade said.
Let me suggest that since this is a six-month project, again, $65,000, and that's a lot of money, I understand that, but it's $65,000. It takes six months. We don't even start any of the others designed for six months. If we focus on this one before we start working on all the others, I mean, there's, all these others are 2020 projects.
Well, if, and when you say the 15 months, I don't have the full timeline here. I'm looking at the schedule that's on the data sheet that I put together, and if you're referring to the March 2019 design start and then the June 2020 completion, the design start, of course, being in the past, we've already started that design work. As y'all will recall, I had come to you previously with that preliminary study, which is well underway, I might add. And then, so that clock has already started. So again, as I say, I certainly understand your concern and where you're coming from. And like I said, I understand what you're saying, but I'm also trying to look at, again, how the committee had ranked these projects.
This project is the number one drainage project. I think the only question is, can we, because we already have started the design, can we accelerate the design? Right now, you have it that June 2020 is when it would be, which is next June, you know, today. So are we thinking it really is going to take that long?
Who is doing the design? Is that internally or is that freezing?
Freezing Nichols has already started working on that. Yes, sir.
So now from June to June is almost 12. I agree, so that's really-
Yeah, I think that, because it is the number, when we were doing these together, I made this the number one project.
It's the number one project. It's the smallest project, the least amount of time to complete. But yet, it's the longest to design, and they've already been working on it for three months.
I get where, I get where you're coming from. Well, we'll certainly take a look at it. Absolutely, we can certainly do that.
Get that great all in there and get it.
It's a good point. You should be able to find it. Look in the middle and get back.
Absolutely, yes, sir. We can certainly do that.
Like, I think it wasn't that part of it.
Focus on the fact that it is the only project on this drainage list that is affecting a resident's home state. We're flooding that family, and we need to find a way to rectify it. It's only going to cost us $65,000. Let's get busy figuring it out.
Hopefully, then that schedule not just to design.
Yeah.
If you can. Get back to us, please.
We will do that. I can, I can, we can do, look at that and get back to you again. Yes, sir.
Anything else, Mr. Wade?
Hey, Lyle, thanks for your help.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you.
And I want to get, Leslie, anything else?
No, sir.
Can I ask the two CIP members, Mr. Anthony and Mr. Andrew, do you have anything else to add? I mean, he's spent several hours, several weeks. Any else you want to add, any? No, no questions at this hour. It's just all, I can ask you, okay, thank you very much for your assistance.
Thank you guys both for helping me.
Counsel, additional discussions or questions? So Susan, what we need is an adoption of the CIP plan.
Yes, sir.
And these data staff will come back, every project, schedule, implementation, funding source, everything will come back to council individually.
Yes, sir, and then just a reminder that annually, we will come back and revisit the whole project, the whole CIP, every single fiscal year as part of the budget process moving forward.
Okay, if there are, thank you, Ms. Black. If there are no, okay, I'm going to open up a public hearing. Thanks, Sean. If anyone from the audience would like to come and talk about this project, the CIP plan, please come. Again, this is a very important project that's going to open. And now with some comments, we're going to close the public hearing at this time. Staff, anything else? Okay, then counsel, can I have a motion in respect to the item number seven? Motion to- The CIP plan, yeah. As presented. Motion made by Mr. Clark.
Special notes for-
Yeah, again, this is CIP plan, the schedule on timing, everything is flexible, so staff has an action to come back on what is that we can do to shrink the whole time. Okay, motion made by Mr. Clark to adopt the CIP plan as presented.
As seconded.
Second, by Mr. Freeman. Additional discussions on this?
Second was by Mr. Freeman, right?
That's right. If there are no additional discussions, all who favor the motion signify. Motion passed, six year off. Mr. Finch, please. Leslie, Susan, CIP committee members, Lyle, Laura Vork, Laura, lots and lots of them, Rashad, and Laura for the staff, what's written that, Eric, everybody, thank you so much for having me. Again, that's just the beginning, right? It's just a step one. Now we've got to get it done. So I'm trying to get to it, I need to. Okay, moving on to item number eight, that is a staff update regarding recruitment of a police chief.
Yes, sir. I just, I passed out a Gantt chart, and I think Rachel's going to bring it up on this sheet. But in our last meeting, the council directed city staff to move forward with recruitment of a police chief as we made the decision to create our own police department with the goal of getting it up and operational by October 2020. So we have a lot of work to do in the next year to do that, and several teams of staff are working on different aspects of that. But the piece that's before you today is actually the timeline for the, and I know the public is not really going to be able to read it, but I wanted you to be able to see what the council was looking at in close up. But this is a step-by-step plan to, for the recruitment of the police chief. And as you recall, in our last meeting, you all appointed a subcommittee, which was Mr. Allen, Mayor George, Councilmember Finch, and myself, and we met to discuss what process we would recommend. And the members of council on the committee desired for us to use a public recruiting firm, SGR, which was the firm that brought me here because we have a relationship, and they have materials already related to the city that'll allow us to move much quicker. So this timeline is based upon that, and I'm going to walk through it really quickly because I want to talk about the aspects of the recruitment process. So in the blue phase, which has already started and would end on July 1st, is really this process that we're in right now, and also getting the contract with SGR approved, working on the recruitment materials. So as you know, there was a recruitment brochure that was done when you all brought me here, and so we can use that as a baseline to get started. The pink area, preparation for recruitment, we'll continue with our discussion and select an actual committee, recruitment committee that would do the interviewing, will get the position profile prepared, will place the ads and do email distribution of the position, and that's one thing that SGR is very good at. They have networks across the country that will really get this position description into their right hands. We'll accept applications all the way through the end of July, so we have that open for a three to four week period. We'll do triage and scoring of resumes, and then the search committee will be briefed, and they'll select the semifinalists. That'll take us into the green area, which is the candidate selection. Right now, we have a written assessment built into the process. We don't have to keep that. I think it'll depend upon the number of candidates we have, and if we feel like we need another step to weed them down. So that whole green area is focused on that. At the end of the green area, you see reference checks, background checks, and a comprehensive media search. That's something that SGR will do for us, that's, that we need to know about in the background of the individuals who are applying. The purple section is the final selection. At 8/26, we'll receive the finalist briefing books. Tentatively, on the 26th and 22nd, will, the 27th, we'll conduct interviews. What we're recommending is that the subcommittee of the council be the core of the interview team, but we'd like to suggest adding three members of the citizen police committee to that interview panel, along with the fire chief and a police chief from another city, and we've got a short list of people. We feel like that would be a really good committee to take a good look at this candidates. We also have built in either a council or luncheon or dinner, so that would be a posted, you know, event. But the whole council would have a meal with the finalist candidates so that you would be able to, as a group, really ask any questions that you might have of the final candidates and give, you know, feedback to the committee on what you saw in your process. We also have a community stakeholder meet and greet, and then next, we have a leadership team roundtable so that the members of our leadership team can, you know, have an hour to sit down with the candidates as a group, you know, try to evaluate, how is this person going to operate within the staff that we have and the culture of the organization? Deliberations, offer negotiations, and then candidate beginning employment. If you look at the very last date, it's 10-1. We'd like that to be faster, and in the opportunities that we can carve time out, we will, but this backs us into a date. So with that, we'd like your approval from me to go ahead and continue forward with negotiating the contract and signing that contract.
Counsel, on page, and this is, except Allen, no one else can read this one, but on page 135, on your council packet, you have all the details. One thing I want to shout out to Susan. SGR's original proposal was for 15 weeks, when the subcommittee and Susan, I guess, subcommittee consisting of Susan, maybe thought, we've got to find ways to shut, come down this time. I think she was able to come down about three weeks' time. And hopefully, we can. Again, the goal here is, with the need to move forward with the Sunnyvale Police Department, it's imperative that we bring in somebody by October 1st.
Yes, sir.
The later it gets, the more cost it adds to the town. Again, Susan, I personally really like the idea of adding some citizens committee members to this interview process because they are the ones who took us so far, so maybe thanks to you, the only opportunity here. Counsel, any comments? Again, Susan, you did say, right, the council members are welcome?
Yes, sir.
Indeed, indeed, but one of the things, if you're going to come, you want to want here, but make sure that you're available for all the interviews, not just.
Correct, and if, if you are going to want to join that, then we do have to post each one of those interviews, and that's fine. We're happy to do that, or we can do it in the way that we have it on the, on the Gantt chart. But either way is fine. I, we really welcome your input and excited about the process. And I can tell you, I'm already getting calls from potential candidates, and that's really exciting, that word is already out, that we're hiring and people are interested.
Everybody who wants to apply will go to SGR.
Yes, sir.
We are not in that candidate submission process.
No, we'll refer them to, yeah, we'll refer them to them.
Again, counsel, as you know, this public safety officer will work for Susan, town manager, so the decision of the candidate at the end will be her decision, town manager's decision. It's not, it's not a council-appointed position as we all know. So it's going to be a town manager-appointed position, but if anybody, anybody wants to participate, can participate to get to know the candidate and get your thoughts, but at the end, it is the town manager's decision. With that, counsel, what, what questions do you have? What comments do you have with this one?
So is Robinson going to be our contact, Holyfield? Is he involved in this at all?
Yeah, actually, I've been communicating directly with Ron Holyfield, and then there is a director of recruitment that I'll be working directly with. And the proposal that you have in your book was the initial proposal, but we've now, like I said, I sent this to them on Friday and said, you know, if we're going to move forward with you, can you meet this? And they said, yes, they could.
I don't want us to see you, right?
Yes.
Counsel, the contract price still the same?
Yes, sir. Fortunately, they didn't raise it with that level of turnaround. It's very quick.
Oh, so they can cut that.
Yeah, one would hope, huh?
Counsel. Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to support this project, being on the subcommittee, have a chance to discuss it with Susan. We beat up a few of the topics, and I think this is, this is, this decision's important. It's a big decision for this town, and we need to get it right. We need the professional help that we have solicited. We've seen what SGR did for us. We went through that process. My only concern was that it took us longer than we thought with SGR, and, you know, I think Susan agreed with that. We shared some processes through that, and she went back to SGR to shorten this and say, we want this quickly, more quickly than what we did last time. But I think we want it right. I don't think we want to compromise the speed for getting it right. And I, personally, this is a big decision our town's going to make. It's something we've never done before. It's something we're never going to do again, start a new police department. So I think it's, I think it's imperative that we get this right. I think it's imperative that we have a professional organization to do this. And I want to commend Susan for listening to our, our concerns and putting them on a fast track to get this thing done. So having gone through some discussions for several hours with this, I think this is our best option, and I support this. It is different because we're going to do some interviews that we didn't do before. We didn't do that with the town manager. And Susan shared that's normally a pretty common thing that they do with town managers, but we didn't do that. So this is something we're going to get a chance to do, is to have some public interviews and have them meet the public, which, again, we didn't do that with the town manager. So something's a little new, but- So something's a little new, but I actually, I think I like the process. More importantly, I like the person that's supporting the process. And so I, I really, I'm personally behind Susan in this process, that we get this thing done correctly and professionally, and we don't have to look back and second guess if we messed this up.
We can this out.
No, we cannot.
We can, it's a huge issue. Mark, Freeman, Clark?
Well, one more thing, Mr. Wade, I, I did have concern paying that kind of money at first.
I hope so.
But after we talked about it, I don't think we have a choice, but I didn't have the same concern yet.
I hope we recognize, this is great plan, we, we know SGR. It might be the right way to go about this, I don't think it was anticipated we'd do it this way when we started talking. But this is aggressive. So I think if for some reason it needed to slide four weeks to another month, I don't think we're terribly hurt. We're still a year away from full function. This is okay. Nobody likes to spend the money we don't have to. Insults can eat us up every time. But we just stay focused and slides a month, though, I think we're still okay.
Yeah, I'm here, but this agrees with you, the quality's important.
Quality's important.
Very important, yeah.
But timing is also.
Timing's important, I agree with Mr. Wade, the right person's probably gonna work more and more than you actually. Like I said, I, I'm, I'm all in on the process, the idea behind it. But as I said, we have to push back a week here, a week there, just to make sure we get the right person, that's all we need.
So you got any comments? Any comments?
I'm good. Don't want to beat the horse too much.
I think it's a good plan, thanks for all the effort you put into it. Just to come back to the whole committee, this committee, so thank you.
So Susan, here the action is for the council to authorize town manager to carry forward with the, the center plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can I have a motion with respect to that?
May I make the motion that we proceed?
Motion made by Mr. Allen to proceed, or second, and second by Mr. Clark. Have you even heard the motion? For the thousand fifty-five? For the force, one, that's six zero. Moving on to the act number, act number nine, that's a mayor and council portion of the agenda. Mayor and council request for future staff of the agenda act. Counselor?
Mayor, I do have one. I actually spoke with Brian Ford at the meeting. It had to do with the brush picked up in the town from the, from the wind damage. And I noticed that there's several residents that have some of that brush still around. And some of them were, in my opinion, some of them were probably elderly, they can't get that cut down. And then, and so Brian said he would take care of the one particular house that I, that I mentioned. And so I guess my point to that is, maybe we need to run through the town and see if we've got, if we need to help somebody that's got limbs that are bigger than what some of those people have got.
I don't know, a staff request, but I, I have it. I want you to shout out to the staff. We started this path of performance metrics. Monty Lee reports is really, really getting better. I like the trend charts, I like the, the visual. It used to be all bad, right? Now there's information coming from this town. And I say, it's something involved, and I appreciate all the directors and schools and headquarters that are through making this transition. We're not where we need to be, but we are all a lot better than we are. Thank you for the municipal excellence.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Counsel, can I have a motion to adjourn and re- execute this session? Proceed to section five fifty-one, what, oh seven? Motion made by, for the second. Second, we can, we can, our, our force, motion passed six zero. Now, it's, it's eight hundred and ninety-nine, we are. Good job, Ashley.
Thank you.
Is it working?
You're gonna see me a lot more. You gotta see me at least, at least four more times.
It's a lovely film.
For what?
I appreciate it, thanks for, thank you, thanks for helping.
I will, too.
Right? We know that all through the.
Always.
Always. Tracy, thank you for the, for the plan. A couple, it can't remember. This is a minus, it's some language, it's not, it's not gonna change.
Well, let me know what they are.
It's my age, I told you, it's my age, I can't remember.
I think everybody gets hung up on this word, so I'm gonna change that to goddamn.
You're gonna go back and get it off?
See ya.
Because I finally let this come on, these will come on.
I mean, I guess they did have to undo that, but I don't understand why they didn't do that. It's why you have to plug it in. You could just lift it up to the market.
What's in that deal?
Yeah, I mean, that was.
Is this lay or is this tie?
It's square. Yeah, it's squares.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay. Okay, yes. What's happening? Silver, silver.
Wouldn't be terrible. But hey, man, you guys, you guys. I was looking at Gilkey, we got things on him. Things we really kind of didn't make the.
Right, right.
I'll tell you honestly, when I saw all the parts, I thought, why didn't I like it? One of the things we need first, and then we worry about making forty bars and all that stuff. Hey, dude, we're losing.
No, because you weren't there.
So, so. Yeah, they're cool, he's gonna keep it that way, they never want.
All right, doctor, you're team. Well, that's all, please, sir. Come to your decision, thank you, thank you.
Okay.
But I use that twice again. Well, again, you have five words. I was curious how it feels.
You what?
I was curious how it feels to be that second. Oh. I want you to read one couple, we did it in Latin.
He's one of the smartest people, he's a two. He said, now, I knew for a first time, I didn't know what kind of relationship. Those people don't develop a kind of relationship. Very left, he said, I knew his eyes, I knew his real, and I knew he cared about his paper. Because when we see it, when we don't want it, we're pissed, we're all pissed go on. We want it so bad, and he said, they had this kind of history, doesn't, if you don't do what they want, didn't bounce in, he was. He had, he went to. He might care about, he went to.
Do what? I'm so sorry. Trying to have a conversation. So sorry.
She said, she said, she.
I'm not, I'm not. She's down.
She's, she's never opened any counter. He just looked.
Well, we do, we should.
Phil, after your little, you're talking.
You want to share that?
Yeah. Yeah. If you have. And he's good, he knew what he was talking about, he could always come there and. Uh-huh. All the. Well, we always. And so that I can say. It's the. Because it's, I think, they're not, they're not, just pick it, just take it. Because it's. There are all. If I stay out of the. I was here. How great that. What do I know? He will be scared. And he will be told, and they'll think he's bad. Because, and I know that he'll freeze up because he's had several beautiful jobs. And he can't, because he, he can't talk to. Well, it's like a lot of people don't test. One guy. Get nervous. See, he doesn't test, he doesn't, he doesn't test. One guy asks him, because two years, and he said, well, what's, what's the matter? Did you talk to her? And Jeff, I said, well, you know, his grandparents are sitting there, so maybe it's, come on, it's all. He didn't cross the bridge. He was like. He didn't want to tell them. It was like he was performing. Yeah. But you know, he's. And there will be that. Always done. Yeah, I saw, I told you, yes, if you're my son, I'm. But Jim was. But Jim, we'd love to hear it, but Jim, and he's the man over here, that, you know, he's the concern. He's, he's just out there, and he's surprised, I don't really know.
They don't really like him. Oh. Yeah, I was like, I think, true, I think he's more of a coward. I'm only doing that. I'm really good.
He's not.
But. But that one, it's some image that didn't even notice, like, some bra. Uh, give it up. Look, and I talked to the dealer. Oh. I got my job.
I know too, and you know, when I said the Jimmy too, he got it.
I think he's seeing me over what they are.
And he knows, I mean, that's like. Yeah. And he's not starting, he knows, he's not starting.
But he's not poppy, doesn't he? He's just, he has.
And he is.
Good question.
So, he might not pop.
But then you know. I don't, yeah, but.
Yeah.
That bears where you're at.
It's my wife, but Jim had the, it's a human. No, I guess we can talk to Helen or Doug now.
He don't have that.
Would you do that? But that makes.
He still got the charm.
How, how's your, what's your shame, Wes? They were sure wrong. Is it serious? Because I haven't, I don't.
She told, she said, I'm sure. She said, I did not look lightly through that.
Well, that's better.
He said, I didn't. No, we had to have me, but we were.
Yeah.
I said, I don't need, we were talking. She said, I, she said, I.
I'm talking to her.
And she was. She asked.
Wait, don't.
She doesn't like her.
Well, the thing, she won't be like.
I'm, I'm, I'm like, she like that.
For sure. We're houses in bad shape, and so, I thought, right there. And now, they could, we'd say to you.
Does she go off?
Well, let's say. But you can't go off anybody else's.
Does she have to play roles, go off?
Oh, I was, I was getting loaded, and I told my, I said, I'm gonna get my guys to move, because they're going to clean their laundry, where they come, this is why I. Because it's gonna be a whole week. And my son, who doesn't even know there are guards, came to eat on Sunday, a couple of weeks ago, and he went, what in the world? What in the world is wrong there? How's it there? Those weeks are longer than some children.
And that went to low, and everybody else is young.
Well, you was looking out, looking in the shop next to me. That could be fine.
Five foot tall someone.
Did that. I know. Did it sound?
Did they got a swimmer?
Sure.
Oh, okay.
Was it hard? What about it? Not hard. But it often's do them behind my eyes. It's never like that. It's just how those, uh, snowed.
Why it's so bad down there, that that cross street.
You know, like, I think, you can come join us.
I'm gonna take up some afternoon tomorrow, but.
So, you can go all through your short drive home?
Yes, in my short drive home.
Did you get any bad weather up there? I saw a lot of it, it was around rural.
Um, last night?
No.
I think. So, yes, but I wasn't.
We did your, uh, wristband, yeah? Did y'all lose power?
Yeah. My mother lost her for four days. And she's here in Dallas. I don't, I don't think ours is that.
Mine was out one day. Mine went out about two, not even four days, we got two in there. And they said, we'll be out there. And then the next night, they came a lot of, that night, so I was replaced. But my mother was up there, and she was, that's why I was a little sick, and I was contagious. I said, well, you can come here, so you, I'm gonna get you, I'll take you to a hotel, and he'll stay with you. And she said, oh, I'm fine in this house. I said, it's gonna get hot, come on, baby, got hot.
Oh, yeah.
That's it.
You played the turkey, you did it.
Oh, see, I'm the same way. I bought this, I'm saying, I buy, and I, right now, my fridge is still, I mean. But it is full, I can't, I'm a door.
Just hoping that our, staying shut.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the last day, he went, he took a cooler, and, uh, got a full eye, so she can have a little. And then I'm like, throw a milk wedge. The only farm that did not lose their power is the one right there on town that he's close to. And so, they had it, another good one. So, they had milk, the rest of them had it all taped off, and they said, they, he's had it all away from produce. Because they said, the produce, they said, it gets hot, cold, he said, they said, it grows mold. But it was in my, her farm, I didn't have anything. Wow. I had a little.
That's crazy.
That's the where she gets our comedian talent.
You know, once the first.
Yeah, as soon as church is over, all of a sudden, she's got to do it. And they're all embarrassed, but.
He makes me, I love the positive. It's a good thing, it's a good thing. I love, she makes me want to walk a while. And, and if you know your promises. And I've even got, if you know your promises, and you act them in trust. Now, everybody's telling, this is what you need to do, just catch your head.
I've got a coaster, because she's freaking out, and so, I've got a coaster, because I kind of felt, I don't think I worked, but she all said, you are a woman, because he's got.
You work because you know.
And I, I mean, I, nobody could ever, I, so last time I was into the February market, they had a deal, and he said, uh, have faith that God cannot be that God came, but that he do.
See, that is important.
And she's out there, Jermaine, God, but he raised your mind, he gave you for it, and God.
She got it, and it's kind of, he said. I bet you're stuck.
Hundred more.
One of the best stops I ever had, but I guess not, her. She was all the way. Positive is weird. She runs the farm by, I said, I said, I'll let you go. Watch what you ask for. I was walking, she grabbed my hand, and then got fifteen.
I'm out, did it work?
Well, yeah, because I just didn't have one, but I have four.
He wants to church, uh, Professor Hollow, Presbyterian Church.
Oh, see? Is that the extra? Is that an extra?
No, no, no. Guess who showed up?
Guess who showed up?
No, 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 no. I'm like, you're ready to leave, and I said, this man come out of sanctuary. When I saw it, I felt it in my veins, I said, it was freezing. I said, that man come out of sanctuary. That was. And I don't mind either, but I'm like.
It must be. Oh, you're lucky, he's a person.
I think he was there that day.
You know, if you jump on a quick, it's a great for the cows, because they need, because it's under staff.
Well.
Chairs.
Hello.
About thirty seven, twenty twenty. Inspector. I think she married to, she married with the dad, and she was a. She married, and it's fine, and you know, the.
Test, test. Does it work it?
Yeah.
Phil can hear us?
Yeah.
Those aren't. Those aren't.